To meeting the order, Councilman Fish would you lead us in the pledge please? Stand for a moment of prayer or silent meditation. Thank you. Melody, would you do roll call please?
Councilman Holt.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Here.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Heinz. Councilman Crabtree.
Present.
Councilman Hinky.
President.
President Dawson.
President. Just a reminder to make sure your cell phones are on vibrate or silent or airplane mode. Can I get a motions for minutes for approval? There are no minutes for approval. Presentations and introductions? There are no presentations and introductions. Unfinished business, Aaron?
Um, not yet, but I'll do it now. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to replace 25-0-23 with 25-0-23R in its entirety.
The motion is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fish. Mr. Espa.
Thank you. The amendment is made to rectify an accommodation for two signs that did not make the original draft. And at this moment, to my embarrassment, I have an additional request for an amendment on page two. The Plan Commission met on July 7th, not the 10th. I'd ask that you strike the 10 and make it a seven. And on pages one and three, there's a 10 for 10 feet, for six feet. And I would ask that you strike the 10 and make it a six for the six.
All right, let's do one at a time. So what was your first request that we have?
To, um... In addition to the, it would be to change the date of the Plan Commission on page two from July 10th to July 7th.
I get a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second. And Mr. Mishler. Hinky.
All right, John, you said on page two?
Final whereas.
So the initial whereas, page one, the July... Your date?
Yes.
Working with page two, okay, thank.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Your second, Ms. Espa.
Page one, in the final full paragraph, six feet is expressed as 10 feet numerically, and that's an error. I'm asked that it be corrected to six feet. And on page three, the same correction in the final, in section two, expressed as 10 feet numerically.
First by Mr. Hinky, second by Mr. Mishler. Counselor discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So ordinances on second and third reading. Any opposed? Motion carries. So ordinances on second and third reading. We need to read it, Melody, as amended. So the motion should be.
Read by title.
Read it by title. Go ahead, Melody.
Proposed ordinance twenty-five dash O dash twenty-three dash R dot one. An ordinance amended by amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number four three seven zero, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, as amended to rezone three point three acres of vacant land at the southwest corner of County Road seventeen and Middlebury Street in the city of Elkhart, Indiana, from R one family dwellings to District Two Planned Unit Development, PUD, B three service business district standards.
Motion is second to adopt this on second reading.
Second.
So move.
I'll I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Crabtree, Mr. Hinky.
So officially, have we replaced, I know we changed the lineup on our docket, but have we replaced in its entirety to twenty-three R?
Yes.
I don't recall that part. I thought we, I'm sorry to ask the question, but I thought we just, you know what, you did. My bad, sorry.
So you were mistaken, Mr. Hinky? You were mistaken? Any other counsel discussion? Open up to the public. Is anyone in the public? Anyone in the public that would like to speak? Mr. Brother?
Good evening. Eric Trotter with the Planning Department. I'm here to introduce a request to rezone the southwest corner of County Road fourteen and County Road seventeen to a planned unit develop, to a standard planned unit development for the purposes of developing a new racetrack fuel center. They have part of an overall redevelopment of the Bullard Farm at at that intersection. They've been through Plan Commission with a positive recommendation from Plan Commission. They are also requesting the two signs to be a part of that request as well. One on County Road seventeen at ninety square feet and one on Middlebury Street at sixty-six square feet. Staff has supported or is in support of this request, requested rezoning.
Thank you. As the records indicate, that Councilwoman Heinz has joined us. Are there any questions for Eric? Mr. Fish?
Oh, David.
Mr. Fish?
Okay. Well, I've got a couple of points just for the record.
Mm-hmm.
I was fortunate enough to to know Kurt Bullard, and I farmed twenty years on that property. And there's a couple of things that I'd like to at least bring out for the record. If you're looking on page six of the of the ordinance tonight, twenty-five dash O dash twenty-three dash R, it it does not show, and I I think, are you the developers here tonight? Yeah, great. Just so you know this, if you're looking at the house picture straight across, on the left-hand side, I'll wait till Eric gets. Yes.
Okay.
If you're at the entrance of the driveway, there's about a two-foot diameter telephone pole. And this is more trivia maybe than, I don't know. But if you take four paces to the south of that pole and three paces to the east, there's a GPS brass rod in the ground. It's about three inches around, and it's about four feet long, and it was driven there when they were doing GPS tracking. It's, that's going to make a difference, but if somebody digs it up, they'll know what it is. The other thing I'd like to add in the conversation here is if you're looking on page two, PUD, you take in the blue zone inside where it says PUD, there's a chicken house, that long hundred-plus-foot chicken house. At the back corner, right underneath the letter P, is a irrigation well. It's forty-eight feet long altogether. There's thirty-six feet in the ground. There's sixteen feet above ground. It pumps a thousand gallons an hour, a hundred and fifty horsepower motor on it, sixteen inches around. That's a lot of water. And it's already fire hydrant ready. It's got a coupler for the fire trucks. Smart thinking on Herman's behalf. But I I didn't know if that was something that the city could work with in terms of accessing water. It might be something to consider.
We will, we will take all of that into into account, and we will do our proper due diligence.
Yeah, otherwise, I I welcome you to the city.
Mr. Hinky.
Looking forward to it.
So how many square foot is the proposed building?
I may have to defer that to the petitioner who will come up shortly.
I would like to know the total footprint and what land will be yet available, the number of pump islands as well. And then will entrance and exit be on seventeen, or will it be on County Road fourteen with an exit on seventeen?
I'll answer that in two in two points. The first, with the pumps and the pumps, pump islands will be able to have the racetrack. Gentlemen, come up and speak to that level of specificity. And the second is there will be an entrance off of County Road seventeen that was granted when the road was widened by the Elkhart County Commissioners. The project has not yet been through plant or tech review, and our engineering department is going to work with the folks from Racetrack to design that entrance. Safety is is of utmost concern for staff and our engineering department as well as the Racetrack representatives. So we are going to work because those streets will eventually end up being dedicated. So we want to make sure that our engineering department has a chance to design those entrances as they will be accepted by the Board of Public Works.
Do we have signaling changes that will be necessary now on County Road fourteen?
That is, might be a little premature at this point. I I wouldn't rule anything out, but I would defer to someone a little smarter than I am who'd be able to answer that.
Because openly saying that, I think County Road seventeen is far too congested with traffic. It would seem, I would hope, that we would stay with the property on the very west as an entry point, as do the other ones in that farm area, and maybe another one, but a seventeen exit would be difficult. So there's that. So I was looking for any buffers and what's going to happen to that particular intersection. And then when they come up, we'll know the principal investors of this. How does this differ then, would be the next question, from Loves just down the road to Marathon and the other one, the other direction? How will this differ?
I think that the scale is smaller than the Loves because the Loves is a full-on truck stop, and this is more of a of a convenience store scaled development at just a little over three acres. Probably comparable to the Casey's at the far north end of the of the corridor.
I'm sorry, the what?
It's probably comparable to the Casey's at the north end of the corridor, County Road six.
And then and then I would also like to know the lateral properties from this developer. Is there a match to this in some other location that we could look at? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So Eric, do we want the developers to come up and speak to Mr. Hinky's questions?
Good evening. My name is Mike Hoffman. I'm an attorney with Beers Mallers. I have Racetrack. With me this evening is, I will be happy to answer any questions. I I think that might be the best way for me to start out is to answer some of the questions that were floated around here. So we we talked about the question about the building size, sixty-one hundred square feet. This would be comparable to a couple of racetracks, very recent developments down in the. That would be the nearest development. Is that right, Zach? Size in type racetrack development. As far as the, there was a question about the pumps, the quantity of pumps. There is four distinct diesel truck pumps over three lanes on the site, and there are eight multi-dispenser pumps, which would be your common. That would have your your diesel and your gasoline. Was there any other questions I was missing? I'd like to just make sure we're able to follow up on all of those to start with.
So, right, so you are saying that there are four distinct truck pump areas, right?
That's that's correct, and it is actually separate from the pumps that have the multi-fuel. So there, the trucks would not impede your typical pedestrian vehicle.
Yeah, but but given that, Eric, I would like to, for the record, just suggest then that that really impacts exiting on County Road seventeen. So that would be my big part there. I would never be a positive vote if that was the case to seventeen. So if your entryway was on fourteen and so on, would that impede your plan?
I believe it is critical for Racetrack to have the access both on County Road. That's how the site has been designed for Racetrack and all of their sites, my understanding, and Zach, you can. Are located typically on on a corner of two intersect. They do use both. And I can touch a little bit on this access point. We've worked for many months hand-in-hand with the city as it relates to this access point, and my understanding is it was a guaranteed access for this property, a portion of which, a little over three acres, we are developing. And so what Racetrack has done specifically is to focus on that location of the access point without any deviation based on some prior agreements that had been had with the property owners, prior property owners and the city, or at that point, I believe it was the county, as far as this location. So I can say that Racetrack is working with the traffic engineer, has been working with the traffic engineer for this County Road seventeen access. And actually, we just got back today an amended traffic impact study which shows this access point on County Road seventeen as being sufficient for a three-quarter movement without a signal. And Racetrack will continue to work with the city, obviously, for the tech process, the review process that would follow in approval, if granted, as it relates to the traffic and the County Road seventeen access point.
The only way, the only way that, and again, I'm not on that commission, so it doesn't really matter, but I would suggest through Eric that, and and Jeff, that we would have a, it's the obligation of the developer to put in a merging lane for trucks that lower speeds to enter County Road seventeen, which if there's no break in traffic, it's just going to be a real problem there. So the city's going to be on the hook one way or the other for either putting signaling in there or having a merge lane sufficient enough for trucks to gain speed to get on seventeen.
Certainly understand on that, and I do believe that that traffic impact study has a deceleration lane that's being contemplated as far as the three-quarter movement without a signal.
Okay, and are you based out of Indianapolis?
No, my firm is actually in Fort Wayne. So so Racetrack, and sorry, I just jumped really quick into answering some questions because I thought that was important. So I'm with Beers Mallers out of Fort Wayne, and Racetrack is actually out of Georgia.
But it's Racetrack. I just thought there had to be a connection in there somewhere.
It was Indy, Indy five hundred somewhere.
Yeah, I would have thought.
It would make sense. It's spelled a little differently, but yeah, Racetrack's actually the third largest private employer in Georgia. They're the twenty-fourth largest in the country.
Thank you. Oh, it's royalty of some kind.
Anybody have any other questions? Mr. Mishler?
Thank you. Will there be any charging stations available or infrastructure in place for charging stations in the future?
For electric vehicles?
Yes.
Zachary Sin with Racetrack, two hundred Gallery Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia. So we do have EV at some of our stations now. Across our fleet, we probably have like six with like eighteen in development. We've also worked with doing it future with NEVI grants or without grants, self-funded. So if that's something that you guys are looking for, we definitely will put this in the future with.
Okay.
Some kind of EV, EV spots.
The other question I had, well, kind of a going off of what Councilman Hinky stated, the turn on seventeen, I'm not opposed to a right turn from going from the station heading southward. However, my concern would be a left turn going northward on seventeen there, coming against the traffic there. Has there been any discussion about having a right turn only there for an exit? And I I understand the need to have.
Yeah.
An entrance and exit there. I just worry about the turning into traffic there.
So the traffic does, the traffic side does show like, don't quote me, I think it's like seven hundred and something linear foot left turn line in there as well, too, so you wouldn't have trucks just stopping to turn left.
Where it wouldn't, wouldn't back up traffic.
Yeah, okay.
That was always traveling on.
So we're looking at both diesel, excel lines, and left turn line net.
Okay, thank you.
We do fully anticipate working on all these considerations with traffic.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Curry?
Yes, my first question is, would this be a twenty-four hours facility? And also, my last question, would you be carrying the rec ninety fuel?
What kind of fuel?
Rec, rec ninety.
Um, we do, I think we do E nine. I can't remember off the top of my head. I can go back and look, but we do offer all kinds of fuel across our fleet if it's heavy zero for when we're down in Florida with boats. So if that's something that the market would drive, we definitely would look into that.
That should be a comparable. That would be a boat fuel.
Right.
Yeah, we do, we do E zero all over Florida and and Georgia near the lakes where we have a lot of traffic or RV traffic.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Mr. Hinky?
Okay, I wanted to go another direction here. There has to be an acceleration, de-acceleration lane, right? And I I really do think that's got to be firmed up. Not a traffic signal. County Road seventeen is is becoming a thoroughfare, and as it develops more, that traffic will be impacted quite greatly. So trucks and that intersection being so close, I'm not sure how you have. It would have to be at the southeast corner of the property in order for it to be an entryway. That corner is just not going to work out. County Road fourteen, not a problem. Don't see that as a big issue. It's purposeful. The acceleration lane, I think, is a big deal because you have truck traffic coming there. Not only to deliver fuel, but you have four bays, four trucks specifically. That says a lot in and of itself. So who are the principals of of Racetrack, Race?
Racetrack. I'll make one clarification. It's only three truck lanes.
Right.
So it's four, so yeah, so it's four pumps, but they fill up on both sides. So that's why it's like. By principle, do you mean owners of Racetrack?
Investors owners, yep.
Yes, we're family-owned for ninety, over ninety years. The same family's owned us. All racetracks are corporately owned and maintain. Operator, so all racetracks will store across our fleet from here to Texas.
Of all the intersections in the country that you can pick, why why this one?
I'm not on our real estate. So we all own our real estate. So we have a real estate arm, and they select our site. So I have not select, did go through the selection process, but we do run data and based off of being close to the all the manufacturing. You did ask earlier how we're different than Loves. You did ask earlier how we're different than Love's. We don't have big fleet deals like Love's, so you'll see a bunch of 18-wheelers go into Love's. We're not really targeting 18-wheelers, we're really targeting your local box truck. Love's and Pilot kind of own the market of fleets. We can do it, but they've been around longer than we have, so we are trying to target the 20% that don't have fleet deals on your manufacturing facility.
I appreciate the presentation and your interest in our community. I would just ask Jeff and Eric to extend the concerns about traffic on loading and offloading on 17, please, thank you.
Since it's our store, we own it, and it's our name on it, safety's number one for us, so we definitely will work with you guys on all of our traffic.
Thank you.
Following off what's said about safety, I think it's important, this was brought up at the planning commission hearing as well. I mean, Racetrack takes great pride in ensuring that there are no environmental issues as well, so if at any point Racetrack were to decommission the site, they would either remove the... Or they would require...
Well, you talk about safety, but the name of the company is Racetrack.
Thank you very much.
They can be safer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance?
Oh, my name's Howard Turner. I'm not opposed to our city adding businesses, and with the addition of Racetrack, I do have two basic questions. First one would be the full-time jobs that are going to be created. Is the city having housing that a full-time employee could afford from that paycheck? And then the second one would be specific to Racetrack. Councilman Mishler asked it, kind of, I didn't understand the answer, charging stations. With all the great activities we have, like the goat cart races last, this past weekend, people coming from out of town, I would see them wanting to have charging stations. I don't see them around the city very much. I see all kinds of gas stations around the city. Those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public? Seeing none, we turn it back to the councils, any further council discussion? Melody, would you do a roll call, vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion for third and final? Melody, would you read despite... Motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mrs. Hines. Melody, would you read despite title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-23-r dot 1, an ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number 4370, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, has amended to rezone 3.38 acres of vacant land at the southwest corner of County Road 17 and Middlebury Street in the city of Elkhart, Indiana, from R1 Family Dwelling District to Planned Unit Development, PUD, but B3 Service Business District Standards. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passed 9 to 0.
Thank you.
Could we ask, just a point of order, Mr. President, that someone does meet with this gentleman in regards to...
Yes, thank you for being here, yes. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-24 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-24, an ordinance appropriating $364,860.10 from the Cumulative Fire Equipment and Police Fund, pay the balance due on the lease purchase agreement for the rescue one apparatus of the city, Elkhart City Fire Department.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish, that we adopt this on second reading, council discussion. Mr. Hinky.
I'm reading the cover letter correctly. After this expenditure, the...
Point of order, hold on. Just answer.
Point of order, this cannot be heard on second and third reading, we have not advertised it as an additional appropriation because it was just brought to the city council on July 28th, so there has not been apparatus, there's not been time to advertise this additional appropriation. So it needs to be tabled at this point in time until we can advertise and heard on August 18th.
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side, motion carries.
So how did it get through to us with knowing that?
I don't know if... That was my question, but I don't know if we can discuss it since this is a motion to table.
It's tabled, so we can...
It's tabled, so we'll talk, yeah, we'll figure it out. Okay. Ordinances and resolutions referred to committee, there are none, there are no tables, ordinances, resolutions, ordinances on first reading, would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-25 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-25, an ordinance enacting and adopting the 25th supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
There are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-26 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-26, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation of certain improvements to the sewage works of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, the issuance of additional revenue bonds in one or more series to finance the costs thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues such sewage works, the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of such revenue bonds and other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of such bonds and all matters related thereto.
There are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-27 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-27, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the city of Elkhart, Indiana, of certain improvements and extensions to the city's waterworks, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the costs thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such waterworks and other related matters, and other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of such bonds.
There are no objections, we'll pass this on to second reading. Resolutions, there are no resolutions, vacation hearings, there are no vacation hearings, other new business, any other new business? Mr. Hinky?
Yeah, so reminding Fire Department about prevailing rates, if we could get some presentation on the last time we've looked at ambulance billing. I did note that when we had State Board of Accounts here, they did pick up on a couple of areas that we... One of us tried to bring up in these meetings, one was the Chase Bank purchase and the question of why we paid millions over the ask, the freight street, which was a $300,000 nearly above ask, and then the CDBG funding. I did ask and have the emails in regards to internal controls, which were denied. Those were exactly the reason for internal controls and executive session, and I'm glad then that State Board of Accounts did bring that up during their audit. I think we could do better, thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? I'd like to thank Megan and Alex for the great job they did, Alex Holtz, and the race...
I didn't do a great job.
Not Alex, though, not Alex, though.
I thought you were talking about, he did a great job.
But we know what to do next year to improve on our positioning. Okay, reports? Reports, Water Works, Board of Safety, Neighborhood Association reports? Curry?
Yeah, I'd like to report for the Pembroke Neighborhood Association. We had another outdoor meeting on yesterday, another good meeting, sit down with the neighbors and discuss the events that's going on in our neighborhood, and the main thing is we're planning for our neighborhood cleanup, which would be August the 23rd. We plan to help the neighbors that were hit over a year ago by the tornado, clean up that property because they haven't moved in yet, and that's our main project that day. And also, one of the main concerns in our neighborhood has been people with roosters and chickens, and I know about three weeks ago, we called dispatch and they sent out a police officer, and because there was a rooster and a chicken running around in the vice president's yard, and his wife didn't appreciate that, and so we kind of know where the one is. We had one neighbor come that lives off of Lusher on Caudessack. He said a police officer had been to their, his house because they thought it was his house that had the rooster, but the rooster is actually on dying heart right in back of his house, right next to everybody, no Sam Bowie's house, and we just wondered, they were wondering what can we do about going to that house and maybe ask them to get rid of that, because we passed out a flyer to invite everybody to our meetings, and on that flyer, we let them know that it's against the law in Elkhart to have those chickens and roosters in our neighborhood, but there's actually two of them in our designated area. There's another one on Benham, because personally, I heard both of these that Saturday morning when we were out passing out the flyers, and some of the... And we've put this on our flyer before, so it's not like the people don't know that they shouldn't be having these roosters in our neighborhood, so we just feel we need to put a little more pressure on them to get them to get rid of these roosters making all that noise.
It's funny you should say that. I was at 7th and Concord, and I took pictures of two roosters, you know, just walking up and down the street. Yeah, okay. Privilege of the floor, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that was not on the agenda tonight? Please go forward and do so.
Good evening, council. I come before you, remind you of a few things. We're heading into quite an interesting season, and I read with interest some of the details regarding the audit from the State Board of Accounts. So I did some homework, Mr. Holtz, some math homework as a matter of fact. I wanted to remind you what the median income is for Elkhart County.
Before you start, did you give your name?
I'm sorry, my name is Michelle Corridge, and I live within the city of Elkhart.
That's what we need, for the record. Thank you, continue.
So, for the median income for a single person in the city of Elkhart, in the county of Elkhart, is $35,913. Sounds kind of familiar for all of those of you who are in the education world, that's about a first-year salary for a teacher. Actually, it's a little bit more. Did you know that that breaks down to $17.96 an hour? The median household income, and this data is from 2023, the median household income is $65,617, which breaks down to $32,081 an hour. Divide it in half, and you actually lose money by having a household in the city or in the county. It breaks down to $16.41 an hour. So I looked at the median cost of childcare, it's $15.54 an hour, which is $21.60 a week, $31,080 a year. So a household is going to basically give up one income to have a family in our county and in our city. The median income for the state, now this I thought was really interesting, it's $57,630. The difference is $21,000 between the overall state and our community, the entire county. If you look at all the bills that young people, as they move into the world, that they incur, and you look at all the bills that are coming due here in the city of Elkhart, in good conscience, you need to look at the cost of our community, the cost to our community. You can't look at $31,000, $35,000 and go, oh, those folks are going to go buy a house. You know why? Because the median cost of a house in this county is $216,000 a year. So none of your children can afford to buy a house, if you have any, without someone else's help. I bring this to your attention because there are a lot of bills coming due, and you have a lot on your plate. One bill that came due is SB 1. And for years and years, we heard about how, oh, back in the day, I think every single one of you have been on the council at one point or another to hear Mary Olson tell us how this affects us 15 years down the road. It happened in 2005, but who cares? I'm saying to you, in 2025, this is what our children can afford, have to live on, and they can afford nothing. So as you go forward and you look at all the costs and everything that you want to add, you're going to have a problem. The other thing that concerns me is the fact that I've yet to hear what we're going to lose as income from SB 1, because the city of Goshen has already come out and said 28 percent. 28 percent. Basically, that's $30 million. Where are you going to come up with that? So I think it's time for you all to check everyone else's needs and what everyone else can afford. The other thing I'd like to do here tonight is tell all of the complacent computer screen citizens across the city of Elkhart, those are the neighbors that are on Nozy Neighbor and Next Door and Facebook and who cares and whatnot on the internet. I don't see you here at this council meeting, and quite frankly, there are probably only three members of the actual public in this room. Everyone else is elected or part of city government. So before you all have time, since you all have time to get on the internet and banter with Councilman Mishler and banter with Councilman Hinky and anybody else who gets online, just remember, this is how the 15% of our community voted, and this council is the result of it. So I encourage you to watch, but I also encourage you to come and get off your couch. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public? Seeing none, we close the public hearing. Scheduling of committee meetings, we have a finance committee meeting of the whole Wednesday, August 6th, here in the council chamber, starting at 5:00 PM, to discuss SB 1. Can I get a motion to accept communications?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Mishler, to accept communications, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All business having been concluded, we are adjourned.